It is six o'clock. We will get started. I'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance in a moment of silence?
Father, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks to our country and for this community, this county, and its leaders. We pray your guidance in this meeting tonight that your Spirit will guide with wisdom and direction, bless each supervisor and the decisions that they're called on to make, and grant them wisdom that is beyond measure, to do that which is always best in your sight. We thank you for your love for us. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence in recognition of U.S. military serving here and abroad and all public safety. You may be seated. First thing in a regular session, approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made before we approve that?
I do have one small addition.
Okay.
Kind of in line with the ordinance for bonuses, we'll need to appropriate that money for the state bonuses, so just add that to new business.
Okay, anything else?
Also, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add, in closed session, that we discuss county administrator duties on the bonus.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the two changes that you have just heard?
Make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, we have the approval of the meeting minutes from June 9th, 2025. Any questions on those? If there are none, can I get a motion to file those?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll say.
And a second? Any discussion? Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Next, we have approval of the bills, claims, and appropriations. Any discussion or questions on that? If not, I'll take an entertainment motion to approve the bill's claims and appropriations.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
A second? Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Moving on, we have a proclamation for the Red Bank Ruin Club's 70th anniversary. I will read that. And Charlie Bowman, is that who's supposed to be here?
Gerald Bowman is here. I'm here, and Mike Foulton is here also.
Okay, well, I'll read it, and then we'll bring y'all up to the front and present that to you all. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of Patrick County, recognizing the Red Bank Ruin Club's 70th anniversary, whereas Ruin Club National had its beginning on May 21st, 1928, by community leaders in Holland, Virginia, and whereas during the past 97 years, Ruin Club has grown to an organization of more than 20,000 members and more than 950 clubs across the nation, and whereas Ruin Club, under its motto, fellowship, goodwill, and community service, has made substantial contributions to the well-being of the Clodwell community and the nation, and whereas the Red Bank Ruin Club has served the Clodwell community since its founding, January, 1955, with 24 members and a dream, and whereas Patrick, I'm sorry, whereas Red Bank Ruin Club surveys the specific needs of their respective community and tailors community service to meet those needs, and will hold its anniversary celebration on Saturday, June 14th, 2025, and now therefore be it resolved on this 14th day of July, 2025, that the Patrick County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim Saturday, June 14th, as Red Bank Ruin Club Day, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. You want to come down and help me present this to you? Up next, we have the public hearing on the proposed ordinance authorizing the payment of bonuses as outlined in Section 15.2-1508 of the Code of Virginia. It was advertised that the Patrick County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Monday, July 14th, 2025, on the proposed ordinance authorizing the payment of bonuses as outlined in Section 15.2-1508 of the Code of Virginia. The hearing will be held on the third-floor courtroom on the Patrick County Veterans Memorial Building, 106 Rucker Street, Stewart, Virginia. I will open the public hearing. And we have no one signed up. So I will close the public hearing. And we need to make a motion to approve that ordinance, if anyone would like to do that.
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance authorizing the payment of bonuses per 15.2-1508 of the Code of Virginia, as approved in the fiscal year 2016 budget.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that ordinance? Okay.
I had a couple of questions on it.
Okay.
The papers that were in our packet didn't look exactly like what I expected from the resolution we heard that night. That thing won't stay up. It's device grips. I didn't quite understand the papers that the other two sheets that come with it. We had the resolution that night and discussed it. Does it only go for social services?
No, the state budget this past year, they approved bonuses for all state employees. But the Department, the State Department of Social Services is the one that told us that this is required in order to get reimbursed for their bonuses.
Will it be just a one-time thing, though, or continue to raise the resolution?
That'll really depend on the General Assembly each year. So if the General Assembly approves a bonus next year, then this ordinance would cover that.
Well, will it be just on the state employees, not the ones that are county-funded?
Yeah, yes. So like the ones who are 100% county-paid, they're not due the bonus.
Okay. Well, one of those papers had like $28,000, 20, what was it, 25?
25, 865.
25, and then this paper here's got administrative performance budget. I think that's the right one. I've got so many papers here, but anyway, it was quite a bit more than the 25,000.
Let's see, Lori passed out a sheet earlier. I mean, it took us-
Because that includes all departments.
Yes, yeah. So the one that Lori passed out that we'll be voting on under new business, the appropriation, it took us a couple of weeks to get, because every office department was a little bit different. So it took us a couple of weeks to get the total bonuses calculated. So that's why we added the sheet, so y'all would have clarity on that for each department that's getting them.
Okay. Any other questions?
So why is social services not fully or almost fully reimbursed like the rest of the offices?
So I'll read you the state comments. Counties partially funding the 1.5% bonus for state-supported local employees in Virginia. The state of Virginia has authorized a 1.5% one-time bonus for state and state-supported local employees. However, the legislation appears to require partial payment by counties for specific categories of state-supported local employees, such as locally elected constitutional officers, general registrars, and members of local electoral boards and their full-time employees. Reasons for county contributions. One reason for this shared funding approach might be that even though these employees are considered state-supported, they function at the local level, and the counties may have some level of budgetary authority or responsibility for their overall compensation package. It is important to note that the state provides funding to help cover these bonuses, but the overall cost for specific employees is jointly handled between state and local funds. In some instances, counties might decide to extend the same bonus to other county-funded employees as well, using their own funds to promote fairness and equity amongst their workforce. So we've pretty much just been told, like with most state things, this is how it is.
I'd like to see a breakdown to see, you know, the sheriff's office is getting $45,000, and they're being reimbursed everything fully, so I don't understand why social services is-
No salary or wages that are paid to, I won't say that's not true. Social Services has some that's 100% fully paid until that 100% category they have is exhausted. And if salaries, which is part of their compensation plan and pass in the budget every year, it might bump into the next category, then where we pay 15.5% of whatever the salaries are in the business. And then when that category is exhausted, we have to pay 86%. And the further category, that's all part of their budget that's passed at the beginning of the year. So in the beginning of the year, most things are covered 100%, and then they, when that category is exhausted, then we pay, pick up more of a percentage after that. Now with the Treasury's Office and the Commissioner of Revenue, they set salaries that have to be a certain dollar amount, but they only reimburse us for half of that. So we have to pay them that, so that's where this comes in. If we didn't pay the bonus for those employees, and we only paid half of that, which what the state's reimbursing, they're only going to reimburse us for half of that half. It's never going to be 100% because we have the responsibility to pay for a certain portion of those salaries.
Well, then why is the sheriff's office 100%?
Because there are certain categories of employees with them in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the clerk of the circuit court, their employees are reimbursed at 100% every month. Same with sheriff's office, they're reimbursed every month, but there are some offices, again, Treasury or Commissioner of Revenue, that are never reimbursed 100%.
I'd like to see where that guidance is actually broken down before we actually approve.
That is passed. I don't have it with me. I can get it down to you if you want, but that was passed. Commissioners and Treasurers' salaries were based on way back years when the state made cuts, but it was mandated that the board, that you pick that up. But we were, all the other, the clerk and the sheriff, we refunded at 100%, but we were not because they deemed that the Commissioner and the Treasurers, a large part of our work is geared locally, because we get the taxes and all of that. So it is mandated that you have to pay that, but they only pay it 50%.
And as far as the bonuses go, each constitutional office did receive a spreadsheet from the state saying what bonus needed to be paid and what portion would be covered, and I can forward those to you while the rest of the meeting is going on.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, we have public comment. Public comment. Offer citizens the opportunity to address the board, either in person or in writing, on matters relevant to the responsibilities of the board. To maintain a respectful and constructive environment, please adhere to the following guidelines. Addressing the board, please direct all comments to the board as a whole. Refraining from addressing individual board members or employees of the board or county. Respectful conduct, personal attacks, as well as the use of insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Scope of topics. Comment should pertain to issues within the purview of the board and local government. Topics beyond the board's control or unrelated to local governance are not appropriate for public comment. Question and answer. Public comment is not a question-and-answer session. Board members will not respond to questions during public comment without permission from the chair. Enforcement. The chair may rule a speaker out of order for violating these rules. Upon second violation, the speaker may be removed from the podium. Eligibility. Only residents of Patrick County or the property owners in Patrick County are eligible to address the board during the public comment period. Time limit. Each speaker will be allocated five minutes for their comments. The clerk will notify you when your five minutes has expired, and one additional minute will be provided for your conclusion. However, if multiple citizens wish to address the board on the same issue, they may appoint a spokesperson to speak for up to five minutes, provided they forfeit their individual speaking slots. Chair authority. The chair has the authority to manage time allocated for public comment, including limiting the number of speakers, shortening speaking time, or waiving any public comment provisions as deemed necessary. Sign-up procedure. A sign-up sheet will be available on the podium for citizens to register to speak. Speakers will be called on the order of sign-up, and additional speakers may be accommodated if time permits. Submission of comments. Speakers may provide copies of their comments to the clerk for inclusion in the meeting minutes. Thank you for your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and productive public comment session. Up first, we have Steve Fairing from Dan River District about the parks.
I've been attending the Parks and Recreation meetings, and I've learned that the county does not provide all the funds necessary to support the park infrastructure. $1,750 is what you provide. Instead, the additional funding has always been provided by groups or friends of the park organizations that run the parks, including all maintenance. Now, they've been doing a great job so far, but they're running out of money. Their support's made possible many improvements and programs that help support our tourism program. This dependence on third parties by the county should not be required. As a county, it's in our best interest to fund the electrical, sewage, water, toilets, trash removal, and additional maintenance to ensure all the facilities in the park conform to our building codes. Ensure that maintenance is prompt and uniform for all parks. Determine the legal requirements to solve the co-ownership problems with the recreational association, an entity which appears to be defunct. Perhaps most important, we will limit our legal liability in the event that an accident were to occur because we can prove our due diligence. With the county paying the operating expenses, we also would have an accurate budget for the Parks and Recreation Department, so they'll be able to budget and fund the activities that take place in our parks. We'll have an accurate budget for each park's annual maintenance expense. Money raised by the current Friends Organization supporting each park can then be spent on park activities for the children and adults. In addition, the rental and maintenance of Stewart Rotary Field should be terminated. And a new lease drawn up to reflect the actual benefit to the county. What's being used by the county are the ball fields. We don't need the building and its maintenance problems. Many here admire the art of the deal. Let's practice that and renegotiate the lease for what we actually use, namely the ball fields, and save a large portion of the $43,000 we currently spend. And I think that kind of a negotiation would fall on you, unfortunately, to renegotiate the lease, correct?
The lease is between the board.
Pardon?
The board. The lease is with the board.
It is with the board. I'm sorry, gentlemen, it's with you. Okay. So I'm asking the board to authorize our county facilities manager to manage this program. Thank you.
Mr. Fairing, you have about three minutes remaining. Would you like to go ahead and talk on the dams while you're here?
No, I'd rather not mix the two, if you don't mind.
Okay. You have three minutes remaining. We're going to get to the dams. Up next, we have Jackson Yakavon from Smith River on public safety.
I'm going to make this relatively short. I don't know if y'all have heard about the tar situation in Mulholland. No, I've talked, I've talked to a few residents there, and a few questions that do raise concern are who hired them? No one knows who hired them. And why didn't we hire a local company to do it? Because they clogged the tread on multiple people's tires. And the biggest problem with this is following the rules and regulations in place to help the safety of the people, also the businesses. If, you know, if there were probably about five, 10 people that this happened to, they could have come out, filed a class action lawsuit for negligence. I'm not criticizing anyone. I'm simply just stating that, you know, we need to address this so that the companies and the people are protected. I mean, it's just simple, and that is the end of that. And I do request that I yield my time to Mr. Jonathan Witt, the rest of it.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on now to Mr. Jonathan Witt.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jonathan Witt, and I own Clay and Twig, a small business in Kreitz. We all want to keep students safe, but I believe permanently closing Dogwood Road in front of the school will bring unintended consequences that hurt small businesses, residents, and the future of Kreitz. Right now, traffic to my business has already dropped due to the temporary Dogwood Road bridge closure. With that project, that project is necessary, and I know the traffic will eventually return when the work is complete. And to be clear, I've been actively promoting Clay and Twig online with Facebook posts, one of my very first reaching over 21,000 views. This, the interest is there, the problem is physical access. I've been working hard to grow Clay and Twig as a destination for the Kreitz side of the county. Even in the short time we've been open, we've welcomed visitors from Roanoke, Greensboro, Chesapeake, Raleigh, and beyond. This isn't my first time building something from the ground up. Back in 2009, I started Round Hill Plants, and since 2019, I've shipped over 5,000 plant orders nationwide. This has given way to Clay and Twig. My neighbors have even voiced their own thoughts and future plans to their barn, seeing the same possibility I do for small-scale growth and tourism in the community in Kreitz. But that all depends on keeping Kreitz accessible. Permanent road closures and read-to-direct in traffic, always away from the west side of Kreitz, make that harder, not just for my business, but for others who are dreaming, investing, and hoping to build something there, here. Many visitors to the Reynolds Homestead currently pass through Kreitz after their visit, giving them a chance to discover small businesses like mine. If the road, if Dogwood Road is closed, they will be pushed straight onto Jeb Stewart Highway, bypassing the west side of Kreitz completely, with no easy route to explore what our community has to offer. The same goes for parents and residents traveling to and from school. They'll take the fastest, most direct route, Abram Penn Highway to Jeb Stewart Highway, and head out to other parts of the county. I've also heard people reference the tragic accident on Church Street in Eden, North Carolina as justification to close the road, but we need to look at all the facts. Church Street sees over 5,500 vehicles per day. Dogwood Road sees an average of 80 vehicles per day, based on 2014 numbers. There is, these are not comparable situations. The Enterprise has reported this section of Dogwood Road has been discussed for years, but there's a bigger picture here. The school and Envision Kreitz Community Center are coordinating infrastructure projects together with the Virginia Department DOT-funded initiative, the Transportation Alternatives Program, APID 10600, Kreitz Community Center. This project is over 900,000 in taxpayer funding, includes building sidewalks along Harden Reynolds Road, Abram Penn Highway, plus a crosswalk connecting the school to the community center. Unfortunately, I believe much of this conversation has been driven by fear-mongering, using worst-case scenarios and out-of-context comparisons to push for the permanent closures. And when you look at how the school and community center are working together on design and infrastructure, it starts to feel less like a safety plan and more like an effort to create an insulated campus-style environment that cuts Kreitz off through traffic, tourism, and small business opportunities for the rest of Kreitz. The school also has plans to build a covered walkway from the main building to the gymnasium. In order to do that, they want to close Dogwood Road entirely. So the road isn't being closed for safety, it's being closed to accommodate their design. The selection of, this section of road on Abram Penn for the proposed school-community center crosswalk has already-
Can you go ahead and be finishing up?
Okay. I've got like a few more sentences.
Okay.
Okay. Already had a history of serious accidents. Wait. The section of road on Abram Penn for the proposed school-community center crosswalk has already had a history of serious accidents, including a vehicle hitting a school bus that was pulling out, another incident when I was in the sixth grade where someone had to be airlifted from the ball field behind the school. So if Dogwood Road closing is being called too dangerous, how is it safer to send students across a blind hill on Abram Penn where serious accidents have already happened? There's, that's not a consistent safety decision, it's a double standard. There are also sense, other sensible effective measures that can keep roads safe without cutting off access for residents, visitors, and small businesses.
Mr. Witt, I'm going to have to ask you to stop there. If you want to send that information to us, we'll gladly look over.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much. Up next, we have Mr. Vance AG from Blue Ridge District.
Good evening. I think most of you know who I am, Vance AG, Blue Ridge District. I would like to offer some unsolicited advice as a senior, experienced businessman. It is my opinion that this county needs a serious balance sheet and budget reform. And I'll cite a couple of examples. I'm of the opinion that if we need legal advice, we have a contingency fund to secure either a prosecutor or a defendant attorney in the event we have a crime that's committed, meaning retainers is poorly spent money. I'll do the same thing for consultants. A retainer fee is just that. You spend it every year, and you get nothing for it. It is my opinion that the talent, the expertise, the educated, the credentialed, and most important, experienced appointments that you have made to the planning commission deserve that money, allowing for that committee to provide for a stipend to retain that talent. That's money well spent. $43,000 for from another consulting firm and got a poor-quality result. Ours was submitted for a legal analysis, and it is now at 96%, subject to another opinion. But we have used the resources and the tools to provide for the language for that specific ordinance. There's your money's worth, for free, since we are right now receive a zero stipend. I want to double my salary now. At the same time, the Board of Supervisors, I think, are undercompensated as well. And any monies that we recover as an incentive for waste, fraud, abuse, draft, whatever you want to call it, my favorite, if we can show a reduction in our budget for where this money has been misappropriated, misused, or otherwise, when the term comes up for the three, uh, seats that I'm looking at come up, I think it's in the bylaws, you're allowed for make corrections to your stipend. That is money well spent. So just food for thought. We need to be sure that we are looking after the taxpayers of this county who are funding all this. Number two, it is my contention that bonuses and cost of living increases are at the will and the pleasure of this board, following the legal laws, everybody talks about legal or otherwise, let's manage it properly. We need to set the compar ratios for all positions in the county governments to be sure we're getting our money's worth. Therefore utilizing that money more appropriately, if, if we're gonna give a 3% cost of living, how about let's have a tax refund of 3% for the taxpayers? That's fair. If we're gonna be moral and ethical about it, let's look at it reasonably and fair. So I just offer that unsolicited advice and counsel, and if I'm invited to a meeting to make it legal, we can discuss the details further on how to manage a budget of this size. Thank you.
Up next, we have Galen Gilbert from Peters Creek.
I was going to talk a little bit about the road in Creytes, but the young man, I think, hit it pretty well and pretty hard and pretty heavy. So, uh, there is some questions about that road, and if they're speeding through there, maybe it's time for the sheriff's office or the state troopers to sit there and start writing tickets. You know, I think the speed limit might be 10 mile an hour through there, and if they're doing more than 10, burn them. You know, if you're speeding, you're speeding. But, uh, other than that, I know there was a comment made up in Woolwine about we might need to look at doing away with underperforming fire departments, and there is no underperforming fire departments. These fire departments are saving y'all millions of dollars with the grants they get and everything they work, and they work hard to have it in the community. If you want to start a firestorm, try to take their fire department away or their rescue squad. You will have a firestorm on your hands. And, uh, other than that, I think that will be all I have. I'm sort of short-winded today, which y'all might like that. But, you know, our fire departments and our rescue squads work hard and heavy, and that's just like they had this horrible wreck down on 58 in Henry County, and ours squad responded and Station 8 responded. And I don't know who's got the wild idea in their mind that they want to get rid of Station 8, but that is not going to work. Because if you get the hospital to do transports, the nursing home and their transport out of the hospital is gonna keep them busy enough as it is. And it just not, it's not gonna float, and people are gonna suffer. So, and like Vance said, switching to another thing, if the county employees need to get a raise, give them the same raise that the senior citizens got of a 2.3 or 2.4%. You know, they didn't get no big raise, and they're already suffering as it is, so let's do it across the board, through the county too. Because some of them in this county is making way too much money, and it needs to be cut. Y'all have a good day.
Up next, we have Wayne Clark from Mayo River District.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. I'm Wayne Clark. I live at Creytes. I've lived there for 82 years. I went to school at Hardin Reynolds. My children went there, my grandchild's going there. My son drives a tractor and trailer through there about every day. I'm not 100% for or against closing that road, but I think we've got some different alternatives we could look at. Speed bumps, big speed bumps to slow traffic down, if that's legal with the highway. Traffic light, like it got in March, well, if you're one mile over at school zone, you get a, automatically get a speed ticket from the camera that's on the light. So I think we've got some different alternatives we could look at. Thank you.
Up next, we have Mr. Ed Anthony from Mayo River District.
Thank y'all for allowing me to speak for a moment. This sounds crazy. I taught school for years, and I'm great when I'm teaching, but when it comes to mean peers, I have problems speaking, so y'all bear with me. I too went to school at Hardin Reynolds, all the way through until they closed the high school and then went to Patrick County High School. Through all my years of knowing, I've never known a bad experience on that road. That doesn't mean that there hasn't, but I've never had heard anybody talk about it or anything to that extent. Need to look at the hardships it puts on other things. Occasionally, we have truck drivers that have, may have a rig that has a long trailer, and if you're gonna go up that cut-back road, you're not gonna be able to cut back and come back down the hill, or vice versa, that angle is so sharp. I don't care what work they do to it, somebody's gonna have to pay for, this work has got to be done to that road. And you say, well, VDOT's gonna take care of that. Who pays VDOT? May not be the county, but it's still us, okay, the taxpayers. Personally, I think we can cure this a lot easier with a few things here. It would be cheaper overall than closing the road and then having to repair the other road there also. Most of those things have already been said here just a minute ago, but I'm gonna go over real quick some of it. I'm gonna tell you, the first thing is, the speed limit through there, I think, is 15, and I was just through there a few, now, this is the problem we're having. I was just through there a few days ago. I attend Creytes Baptist Church back up the road where it's like 20 or 25, and this guy blasts by and almost runs me off-road at about 60 or 70 miles an hour through the school, okay? Ran all the way through the stoplight on Abram Penn and proceeded on towards Stella, okay? Well, there was a problem there, and the problem is, and I know the police department has enough problem with having enough people as it is, but can't we maybe occasionally get state police come down there and patrol a little bit, and can't we write some tickets? Hey, that's more funds for the county, right? And you get up to those done, some people are gonna pay attention. Heaven forbid, I, you know, I need to make sure I keep my foot on the brake also, everybody, you know, people need to pay attention. This is important, it's our children, but it needs to be taken care of that way as much as anything else. Other things, um, the, the cut-back road, if you, if you're coming from Patrick Springs and you have to cut back and go up the hill and cut back certain times of the year, the sun is just right at a certain time of the day, and you go to cut back on that road, it's in your eyes, that's another problem it's gonna cause. How about the farmers in the area who use those roads, now they're gonna, now they're not gonna run over the kids. I mean, you know, they're making about eight miles an hour, something like that, on the road. But, you know, they're gonna have to run all the way back up here and cut across into this big road where people speed all the time. There have been wrecks at the corner of Dogwood and Abram Penn, okay? And I'll tell you, in my opinion, that is running too fast also. But these are things that need to be taken care of. You know, couldn't we put some more flashing lights up? Coming from Stella Road, you know, um, the, there is no flashing light there whatsoever. It says school zone. It's got a, a single sign that shows two kids walking across, and, you know, it says school zone, but, but there's no flashing lights whatsoever. The other ways have flashing lights. The one coming from Patrick Springs, you can't see it because it's grown up of weeds and stuff, and I'm not sure if the one coming up the hill on Abram Penn from the eastern side of the county, I'm not sure that it isn't about grown up also. It's just some little things that need to be taken care of. Yeah, if we had to, let's put some speed cameras in there. The ones that get your license tag, and you get a ticket at the end of the day, you know, okay? Maybe that would do some stuff also. I think that would end up paying itself back also.
Finish it up in the next minute or so. About another 30 seconds.
Yes, I can do that. You know, children are, you know, usually escorted by the teachers and so forth. Maybe a push-button stoplight there for when they're getting ready to go across, and you give them like 30 seconds or, or a minute to get across. There's a lot of different things we could do there. I've talked to a lot of people in our area, and they're not very happy with it whatsoever. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. So, Mr. Ferring, you have, Ms. Walker, how many minutes left, what's the time, yeah, remaining?
Um, this first one, I have it 3:07.
Okay. Couple minutes to talk about the dams, if you have that written down.
Patrick County maintains seven dams in the Ararat area and has deeded right-aways to six of them. The county already bears the burden of maintaining the dams at a budget of approximately 90 grand. So let's use them to benefit our residents and guests. We could use our right-aways to provide access to the dams and ponds for canoeing, kayaking, and fishing. By keeping them as unimproved wilderness areas, fewer no additional costs would occur to the county, other than the addition, the initial signage and providing trash pickup. If a location becomes heavily used, a porta potty may be needed. That eventual, eventuality can be addressed, budgeting provided when it occurs. Our county tourism offerings would be enhanced by providing several local fishing, canoeing, and kayaking venues. Any local dam owner who objects to this plan would have the option to apply to the state and take over the maintenance. That would be to our benefit anyway. The properties are already maintained by the county's facility management department, so no other department's budgets would be affected, but I would recommend that the board authorize this project. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. Moving on to new business, election, district polling, location, certification of no objection slash schedule, a public hearing for August 11th, 2025.
Susan, here. She's in, hold on. So, there she is.
I'm just here to answer any questions that you have. Oh, okay. So, everybody on the board, you should have gotten information on this. We talked about it last month, I believe, moving it to a more ADA-compliant location and actually putting it in Peters Creek District, since it was in Mayo River. Is there any discussion on that before we make a motion?
It's the ordinance that's been provided to us in our packets, the final version. If it is, I have one typo that I think needs to be corrected. In section one, it says the ordinance adopted by the Board of Supervisors be replaced and replaced, I think it's repealed and replaced. That was the only thing that I saw.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments? If not, it looks like we need a motion to approve the certification, and then we'll have a motion to schedule a public hearing. So the first one is a motion to approve the certification.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Next, we have to schedule a public hearing for August 11th, 2025. Can I get a motion to schedule that public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on scheduling a public hearing for August 11th, 2025? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Up next, we have the Virginia Department of Transportation, proposed road closure.
No, sorry, my voice. Dogwood Road, I'm, I'm just here to speak on the process of discontinuing maintenance, and there is a process, a citizen notification, a button property owner notification. VDOT would schedule a public hearing, maybe tentative for September, but there's some steps that you all need to go through if you're interested in pursuing discontinuing But, again, it would start with the intent to discontinue that I think is included in your board packet.
Uh-uh.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Next, we have to schedule a public hearing for August 11th, 2025. Can I get a motion to schedule that public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on scheduling a public hearing for August 11th, 2025? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Uh-uh.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay? Up next, we have the Virginia Department of Transportation proposed road closure.
Good evening. Ooh, no, sorry, my voice. Dogwood Road, I'm, I'm just here to speak on the process of discontinuing maintenance. And there is a process, a citizen notification, a button property owner notification. VDOT would schedule a public hearing, maybe tentative for September, but there's some steps that you all need to go through if you're interested in pursuing discontinuing But again, it would start with the intent to discontinue that I think is included in your board packet. And if that's your pleasure, you know, feel free to let me know and we can start that process. Otherwise, we, we will not pursue it.
I guess, I guess we would just need a vote to decide if...
Yes.
Yeah, if Patrick County wants VDOT to start the process. There'd be a public hearing involved hosted by y'all, correct?
Yes, yes, we would host the public hearing at the September board meeting tentatively. And again, we provide the property owner notifications, do all the advertisement, and handle everything from that point if, if you are interested in going forward.
And Mr. Wood is here too from the system.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
I would like Mr. Wood to speak on the intent and, you know, what your overall goal here is, just so everybody can be informed outside of the board as well.
Good evening. Yes, on May 15th, our facilities committee had a meeting with VDOT at Harden Rentals Memorial School. As some gentlemen have stated, there are issues where cars may go 60 miles an hour during the school day through that intersection. We have had multiple times where teachers have had to stop students, cars have had to slam on the brakes, and it is a dangerous intersection for students to cross as they're approaching that stop sign. So we have, for a decade, have reached out, looked for ways in which we can shore up the safety of students because that is our priority, number one priority in our public schools is the safety of students and staff. So VDOT acknowledged the concern. I know it came up before the board before and there was a price tag involved. And so VDOT proposed a solution of abandoning the road. Is that the only solution that we would be inclined to hear? It is not. It's the, I guess, proposal that was presented to us and at this time it's at zero cost to the county or to the school system. And, you know, again, we are aware that it's easy to fall in the mindset that nothing has happened, so why are we proposing a change? But in regards to safety of children, staff, and families, we can't afford to have a reactive mindset. So please forgive me, I would never want to make any tragedy a public issue, but in Patrick County, we have had tragedy where a student was struck by a car in front of an elementary school. It was not Harden Rentals, but again, things like that happen, so we have to be proactive. So just as any other safety concerns such as school tragedies, we have to plan for the worst, and that's why we have implemented school security measures as far as access controls, video surveillance, weapon detectors, now panic button systems. So we can't be reactive just because something hasn't happened. So yes, closing the road is an option that would cause many inconveniences. However, a layer of protection outweighs the concerns of being inconvenienced. So again, we are open to ways in which to increase the safety there. This is the proposal that VDOT provided us, again, at no cost to the county or the school system. So I know there was some comments made, there is no plans for a covered walkway to the gym. So I think a lot of conversations have been had, knowing that this was gonna be on the board agenda, but there is no budget set aside, there's no project design for a covered walkway to Harden Rentals. It is strictly a student safety concern because, again, for a decade, in our school crisis meetings and those kind of things where we have SROs and deputies walk with us, it is a concern for the safety of our students and staff. And we've had situations after a ballgame in the evening, cars come through there, students run out of the gym who are not familiar with Harden Rentals, and that has been a concern from other, other areas in, in the county other than just Christ. So that's where we have come from. Full circle, again, it's been a decade on our crisis concerns, and so we're looking at any way we can to improve the safety of our schools. Any questions?
What would be wrong with, I rode through there the other day and looked at that thing after, heard about it, and when it come up the other time, it was a building out there on the crossover, right in the corner of that other road. That thing had burnt down since then. And it's a tree or something right the other side of the gym, it's got little kudzu growing all over. If that was cleaned ever gone, you've got a pretty good site distance all the way around there. And those ripple strips that the highway department had have done deteriorated and gone. They ought to be put back. And, you know, one of those flashing signs or something like it, I think I suggested it about 10 years ago, maybe a barricade to come down. The teacher could push it on either side and barricade come down like a railroad crossing. But site distance is a whole lot better right now.
Yeah, and they're, they're still slamming on the brakes to avoid from hitting teachers and students crossing the road.
Well, you know, if you go back with those ripple strips, again, replace those where they were out, some kind of lights or something like that, you know?
We, we're open to suggestions to improve the safety. Large speed bumps has been suggested, you know, if the road was closed during school hours or we could close it for after school activities, it would not be an issue on weekends or outside of school hours, but we're, we're looking for VDOT's guidance on what is allowable.
That, that's just my opinion.
Any other question?
I mean, I, I like the idea of closing the road for the safety concerns, but I, I do worry about the amount of traffic that that's gonna divert and, you know, potentially cause other issues somewhere else. And I know a lot of people have expressed concerns about making that turn with the angle that it is. I despise roads that angle up to a main road like that. And maybe, maybe the solution is to try to do something, you know, just during the school day, you know, something that would be a little more efficient. I don't know, that's, you know, something, something VDOT can talk to us about.
I know coming out of Dogwood onto Abram Penn, if you're going, if you're going, if you're sitting at the school on Dogwood and you make a left on Abram Penn going towards the homestead, that's a really tight turn as well. So like the, the corner there that the school makes, that's, that's pretty tight. And if you've got someone coming from the homestead getting ready to turn onto Dogwood and there's a vehicle on Dogwood, that vehicle almost has to move in order for that, unless it's a small car. If it's any kind of size at all, then the car on Dogwood needs to move first in order to make that turn. So that's also a very tight turn. I just want to clarify too, exactly what part of Dogwood would be closed off? It's my understanding from crossover to about the teacher parking lot or to the gym?
Yeah, to the, to the parking lot. It's about 300 feet.
And so Dogwood would now, instead of having a crossover, it would almost be a curve and then comes up to Abram Penn. And I'm assuming that would be opened up so that the turn could be made?
Yes, yes, that's what we talked about, doing some kind of minor improvements to those, all those corners, to crossover in Dogwood and crossover in Harden Rentals, to make those turning movements easier. But all the traffic would come from Harden Rentals and, I mean, Abram Penn into the school.
And I can see that, you know, it'd be easier in a, in a large vehicle if you're on Dogwood and going to Harden Rentals road. It would be easier to go straight across, but any kind of turn there, that's, that is a tight turn.
Yes, we, we do. We need to cut some trees, cut some brush, and do a little bit of widening there, which we can all do, do on the, within the rightofway that we have.
And I think there's more room there at crossover to do that, from crossover onto Abram Penn.
Right.
To make that happen.
Yes, yes.
That crossover road, how wide is it?
We measured it at 16, 17 feet in places.
It's not much. If you've got two buses or two trucks passing on that.
It's not much, but it's, it's probably as much as we have on a lot of the roads that have more traffic. Yeah, we walked and measured it and I think it'd be fine. I know at one time we talked about widening it, but I, I don't think that'd be necessary.
Any other questions? Mr. Wood, I had one question for you before you left. How old is the gym at Harden Rentals? You know?
I can get that information for you.
I guess it's the oldest gym in the county, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's improved since the early 90s, I know. I spent a lot of time changing in that locker room with flooded basements. So with all of that, if we don't have any more questions, would we like to have a motion to schedule a public hearing at the September board meeting?
Right now, we're not saying yea or nay on the project.
We're just scheduling a public hearing and that gives them the reason to keep moving.
Yes, yes, you're not deciding anything.
Other than just let's have a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Get it to the weeks with.
Does that also give y'all time to bring back some possible actions as opposed to just the closure?
Yeah, we, we can, we can do that. We can give you some, maybe some hints or tips that, that may improve, but yes, we can do that.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Any further discussion on that? Remember your voting just to schedule a public hearing at the September board meeting. If not, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
And if, if I may, while we've got VDOT here, I'd like to discuss Woolline Highway. Just north of 7010, Woolline Highway, we've got a, a sharp curve and it's gonna be just south of Shuck Ridge Lane. We've had quite a few crashes and many vehicles go off the bank down the hill. We've even had one end up in the creek all the way at the bottom that caused some issues. So some of the neighbors, some of the citizens in that area have asked if you would, could do a study and look at maybe putting a guard rail?
Yes, sir.
In that curve?
Yeah, too.
Because I know that's, it's might run off that curve and you wouldn't find them until later. And also revisiting the tractor and trailer traffic going up Floyd Mountain between Woolline and the county line. It continues to worsen, and I know that you've got the signs up and, and they're coming up and that gives our state troopers something to work with. Again, those trucks just do not fit on that road. And correct me if I'm wrong, but even when you unrestrict 58 and are ready to restrict 8, that's still gonna take time and there's gonna be a process for us to go through to do that, correct?
That's still a process.
Right. And my personal opinion is those vehicles do not belong on that road and I feel if one of my family members get hit because of, or have an incident because one of those trucks, I want to sue the state because that's, it's gross negligence to have those vehicles on that mountain. You've got no shoulder to get over on, there's no runaway truck ramp. It's, it's, it's a horrible situation. So having said that, I would like to make a motion if we could schedule a public hearing, hopefully for August 11th, our next board meeting, if possible. I know we've got a lot on that day, to restrict Route 8, Woolline Highway from Woolline to the county line. So once that ordinance is placed, is in place, then we're ready to move forward and don't have to wait for, because that, that needs to happen quickly.
I don't think we're at that point yet. Excuse me for interrupting. VDOT has to hold, you, you can, you can go ahead and hold your public hearing, but VDOT would have to hold a separate one also. We just put those signs up last week and we, we met a couple months back, Sheriff Smith, we met state police headquarters, and they asked, told us that once those signs went up, they would increase their patrols and, and hopefully bring awareness to the truck traffic on that mountain. So I guess what I'm saying is if, if we could give it a chance, give those signs a chance and let's see what happens.
And, and so before I move forward with, 58's gonna have to be unrestricted before...
Yes, sir.
Okay. And does that have to go when 58 is complete or once 58 is in a comfortable place, can that become unrestricted then?
I think we, we need to be pretty near completion. We're about 70% complete right now. We're still running two lanes of traffic. Two-way traffic.
Because just the, it is in these 53-foot tractors with the extended cabs trying to get up and down that, there's not a soul that uses that mountain on, on any regular basis, hasn't had a near miss or forced off the edge of the road. When a truck gets stuck, then that sets them back anywhere from one to three hours. Anybody trying to get up and down the mountain, we've had people that's late for work, we've had people late coming home. I've had to cancel two appointments trying to get to Christiansburg, waiting an hour or more to get up that mountain because these trucks are stuck on it. I just want to be ready to, to go now as soon as we can. So I'll retract that for now. And then as we move forward, because this, this needs to happen, we don't need to waste time making it happen.
And I agree with what you say, doesn't have to be 100% complete. We may be missing signs, but I think as long as we get it under four lane, then, then we'll be good to...
Even if it's a solid two lane, it's still a whole lot safer than Floyd Mountain. It's, it's horrible.
That's a big problem, Lisa, but the trucks too, when they come off of say 220, is the sign there telling them that it's restricted up there?
It's, it's not, the, the signs aren't saying restricted. They're advising of a mountainous road, giving advisory speeds, and these are ginormous signs. You, you can't miss them.
But they are on 220.
No, they are not on 220.
See what happens when you get up to say Route 8 and 57?
They're on 57 and they're on Route 8.
Well, if you get up that far, then what are you gonna do? You can't turn everything around in the middle of the road and the truck drivers...
No, you can't. You'd have to go back. You'd have to go back.
You'd have to route 8 to 50.
Yeah.
And, and there again, with these trucking companies, by restricting it, it's gonna force these trucking companies to actually do their due diligence and plan their routes. And 90% of these trucks have no business going through Woolline at all whatsoever.
I agree with you, but you can see both sides of it. I drive a truck too, you know?
And, and of course a restriction, you know, by law, local businesses are exempt, you know, if they're doing business.
Well, if it's local, they come on here knowing it, but you've got somebody coming down 220 and he's going by that GPS that don't work half the time.
Right. And, you know, these trucks with proper planning, they're, they're, it's quicker to run 57 to 220 or why even come off 58 into Stewart's when just stay on 58 to pick up 220 or 103 to 77. Just, and not to mention Woolline Fire Department, no telling how much money that they've had to spend having to deal with these trucks being stuck on the mountain.
Yes, we have.
So it, as soon as 58 can flow smoothly, I don't care if it's four lane or not, I, I will revisit this unless we go with public comment. It's still safer than Route 8. Floyd Mountain, and I mean really, if something happens to one of my family, I'm suing the state because there's gross negligence. Those trucks do not fit on that mountain.
Anything else? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you retract your motion?
I retract my motion.
Up next, we have the Patrick County Public Schools Budget Amendment.
Yes, before your two things. First is the Patrick County Public Schools requesting the board supervisors set a public hearing for August 11th. As in previous years, we're requesting a hearing due to carryover funds from fiscal year 2025. These funds are outlined in the code of Virginia's capital projects already approved by the school board, which should not, could not be completed... These funds are outlined in the Code of Virginia's capital projects already approved by the school board, which should not, could not be completed by July 1st of that fiscal year. Other funds in that request are grant funds, which specify the amount of funds which must be carried from one year to the next. So that's the first part. The second part is we're requesting to amend our approved 2026 budget. We were in contract negotiations with our virtual provider, which is Stride K-12. They would like us to increase our enrollment with them, which would become a negative cost to the county. You know, in the past four years, we've been able to have a negotiated compromise budget in which we have been able to reimburse the county over $1.5 million from the school system. And so looking at that additional enrollment, it became no longer beneficial and became more of a detriment to the county. So we and our finance department have looked at creating a budget that excludes those students, which was a huge revenue decrease for us, over $2 million, in which we are drastically looking at cutting our capital improvement line, which we're able to offset with the 1% sales tax. Also, we were not able to fully fund health insurance for employees, so their health insurance premiums will stay the same through attrition and also reduction of staff at the high school and the school board office. So we have made significant cuts. However, we're requesting $200,000 above required local effort or required local match. And that will still end up being a net savings for the Board of Supervisors in Patrick County of $55,213.
So first thing we have is to schedule a budget hearing on August 11th. Would anyone like to make a motion for that?
Make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion on that? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And then the next part was your request for, I'm sorry, can you run through that one more time?
Yes, to amend our approved budget. We have had an approved budget at the school system in March and then we had to amend that in June.
Right.
With, we have a revised count tool that just came out in June and then also those contact, contract negotiations with Stride K-12. They want to increase our virtual enrollment and that again would become a negative cost, a much more significant required local effort and required local match for the county. Again, we strive to not be a burden to the county. We were trying to have a compromise, like I said, where we've in the past four years have given back to the county $1.5 million. So in a compromised budget moving forward, we would like to no longer enter that agreement with Stride K-12 and the net savings to the county would be $55,000 from what you already have approved for our school system.
So you heard it all again. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion on that? Before we proceed to vote? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
Now vote aye as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have the Patrick Springs Park Funding Request.
Sir, do you buy him from Patrick Springs Park here? So in your packet, you saw that there was a letter written from Mr. Bradley Wallace, the president of the Patrick Springs Park Association, requesting additional funding to help them cover the cost of utilities, including electric bills and PSA and waste services.
So I think everybody's had a chance to read over that. You see that the Patrick Springs Park has acquired the electric bill from a few months there. Also, they are the only park that's connected to the Public Service Authority. That costs $622 a year. And also their waste services, I'm not sure who they're contracted with, somewhere nearly $1,800 on top of that. What discussion do we have on that?
I have a couple of ideas and I rode through the park Saturday and Sunday this weekend and noticed they've already done those. I know ICD Heart Park in Woolline has changed over from the night lights, from your traditional to the LEDs and it it really helped the electric bill out for ICD Heart Park in Woolline. Looking at them, Patrick Springs has made that change as well, although the lights were on all day Saturday and all day Sunday. So I don't know how much it helped. So there may be some of those, some, those type of things they can look at. I'm not sure if Mr. Vernon with our PSA would have any suggestions on things that they could do to help reduce the water piece with waste services and I'm not sure if it would be conducive for the county or not. It may be something that we could, the county could look at and maybe even Jason's already left. Look at with the school, if the county did our own waste, remove our trash pickup. So if maybe the county and the school went in together, purchased a truck, each entity could get their dumpster and then have county employees run the truck, pick up trash from our schools, fire departments, rescue squads and local parks. I don't know if that would be enough savings to justify purchasing the truck and the bins, but it may be worth looking at. I don't know. And I do know that a healthy park, a nice pleasant park, that it's clean, that things are going on, a lot of data, that being evidence-based practice, best practices. It builds communities, not just physical health and mental health, but it also helps with tourism. I know Patrick Springs has a lot of adult softball games. They have a summer and winter league that goes on all year that brings people in from surrounding counties. And it's also something as we're looking at economic development, that's something that businesses look at. It may not be their top one or two things, but they do look at recreational opportunities that they would have for their employees. And healthy, healthy parks weigh into that and are beneficial. So that's, that's all ranting I have right now.
What other comments do we have on this?
I would like for us to take a better look at all of our parks and how we support them. You know, quite frankly, I would like to maybe, maybe task the recreation committee with reviewing expenses for all the parks to see what kind of expenses that we have across the board so that we can make, you know, a fair determination for all the parks across the county.
Devro, I have something I knew I was forgetting. When I was advocating to increase our TOT tax, these are some of the things that I had in mind. You know, transit occupancy tax to increase visitors, pleasant experience for our tourists, having a little extra money to feed our parks so that they can grow, improve. And then also fire and rescue as well as our tourists, you know, they're hiking, they're biking, they're fishing, they're kayaking, all that kind of good stuff. And that, you know, beasting, snake bites, rolled ankles, those kind of things. And by strengthening our fire and rescue, that strengthens the safety of our tourists as well. So that's just a place. And I know there's some issues with our transit occupancy tax, what goes where and how much it should be, but I think that would be a good use of those additional taxes.
What other comments on this? Anyone?
I agree that we grossly underfund our parks. I'll be the first to admit that. I didn't learn that for a while. I'll fess up and say that. We do need a better way to fund them because they do bring in a lot of people. You know, and it is a meeting place for the community. If y'all didn't get a chance to go see the fireworks on the 4th of July on the County Stewart, that was awesome. I joked and told my wife, I said, if anybody's going to commit a crime, it will be on that day because everybody in the entire county is within a half a mile of D-Hart Park at that point. But we do need to go ahead and find a better way to fund that. What I'm asking the board for now is Patrick Springs Park is, I believe, behind on their electric bill.
The bills that they showed us were, Mr. Wallace came to pick, I think he came to pick those up, correct? We asked him to. Yes, I don't know, I don't know what the status of those currently are. I will, one thing I'll say just from like kind of secretarial administrative, if y'all vote to approve additional funding, I would just, it's going to be, I think, better for us from a, it'd be better for us if you just increased the contribution. You know, instead of, instead of paying their bills for them or anything.
Right.
They get 1750. They requested 8250. So that would be an increase of $6,500 to their annual contribution. Like I said, if, if y'all go along with that, just from an administrative standpoint. So no, I don't know the, sorry, I don't know the current status of their bills.
Personally, I hate to wait until next budget year to try to take care of some of the shortcomings to our parks.
Yes, Mr. Gilbert?
I do have a question. If the PSA is Patrick County PSA, why are they charging a Patrick County park for water and sewage?
So that's my question.
Why is that happening? It's part of the county. It's the only one that has it.
Right.
It should be washed for them. It should be free.
The one in Stewart that isn't on PSA?
Is D-Hart not attached to the PSA?
Their PSA, but their County Stewart.
County Stewart.
That's a different, if it's Patrick County PSA and they're using water in that factory. It should be washed. That would save you $600 a month or whatever you're getting for a month. Or, yeah, at least.
$50 a month, give or take.
Reduce the rate of water. That's just like, I use my head to get it.
So any ideas from the board?
Well, I'll make a motion to task the Parks Recreation Committee to review expenses for all of the parks and bring us some ideas on what we can do across the board as opposed to just throwing additional support to just one park.
Parks and Rec meets every other month, I think. So they met in July, so they won't meet again until September.
I would make an alternate motion that we, not knowing the status of the bills, that we go ahead and pay any arrears, emergency arrears that are built up at this point. Speak to the PSA, that what Mr. Gilbert was talking about, see what they have to say and then come up with a firmer plan like Mr. Overby's talking about.
Okay. So right now I have two motions. Mr. Overby's tasking the Rec Board with coming up with the expenses. We'll take that first. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that one. I think it'd be good to have it figured.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and a discussion on that? If not, Mr. Marshall?
I understand that one is an exception to paying the arrears that the Board was rolling up.
Okay. Mr. Kendrick? Mr. Perry?
Will the, the local park committees, they serve on the Rec Department, right? So I mean, they'll have a, each, each park committee will have a voice in that. Then I.
Okay. Mr. Perry? I'm sorry. Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So we will work on that. Then we have Mr. Marshall. Could you please restate your, it was in the form of a motion, I believe. Could you please restate that for us all?
Well, little confusion. I thought Mr. Overby's was not to pay the bills, but my motion is to pay the arrears that exist at the moment and then continue with what Mr. Overby was saying and Mr. Gilbert was saying. About talking to the PSA. In other words, we'd get the same information as motion is, but we'd be paying the arrears immediately so that the bills are paid.
So just to be clear, we would follow up with them and ask them for any past due amounts?
Yes.
And then if the board approves that, then we would pay, we would just give them a contribution to cover that?
Any actual arrears, if they've already paid it, there wouldn't be any, sure.
Okay.
Okay. Does everybody understand his motion? Is there a second to that?
We get that information first or like what are, what's?
I mean, like, nobody's here to speak for them. We can reach out to them tomorrow morning and get it to y'all and if y'all want to table it till next month or?
I think we should do that, don't we? We ain't going to know what, how much is our area or nothing else.
I think we should table that until you get the information.
I don't want to approve an unknown amount.
And that's my thing. I agree with what Mr. Marshall's saying because it's important that we don't fall way behind on our bills and our parks stay healthy and up and running. And Patrick Springs do, they do do a lot. Constantly, and I think that does need to happen, but there again, exactly how much are we approving and how much is emergency that arrears are and, you know, what does that mean for other parks as well, so?
Y'all could, just not, you could approve, I guess, maybe up to a certain amount. If we look at what their request was, you probably could average that out per month. I mean, you could say up to $700 or something, I mean, if y'all wanted to. But once again, nobody from the park is here to speak for us.
You could just pay the contributions well. That's in the budget.
Yeah, yeah, the budget, I think we usually pay the contributions a little bit later in the year, but we could just go ahead and pay the contributions that y'all have already budgeted.
Which will be the 1750, correct?
Yeah, it's going to be the 1750. So if they're behind, they would have that.
Give them to all the parks at this time.
I think that would be the better idea as opposed to just purging an unknown amount.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Marshall, would you be in agreement to that on your motion or to just go ahead and pay that and then have the discussion a little later or you're sticking to what you have?
There would be fine as long as they have some funds to pay the bills. That's my concern.
Okay. So would you mind restating your motion to the fact that we will send our yearly contribution sometime in the next, I don't know how long it'll take to get it out. Jones, do you have any idea how long before you can?
We can cut the checks tomorrow.
All right, I'll make the motion or amend the motion to reflect that our contribution will be paid to them ASAP. And they should be able to cover it.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Now, gentlemen at the board, I want to make sure that we do not let that get pushed to the back burner. That's something we really need to work on and get that taken care of. Because us right now, I think we've put that Band-Aid on that broken leg. And we need to work on a long-term solution to, to fund our parks much, much better with, with some monies that we are getting in, hopefully from TOT and other places. So let's make sure, in fact, if we could go ahead and just plan on having that on the agenda, I think next month, that would be, make sure we don't forget about that. Okay? Up next, we have the Department of Social Services and Child Services Act Fiscal Year 2025 Appropriations.
The budgets for CSA and DSS were already approved as part of our FY '26 budget, which is the treasurer requires separate appropriations for those individual funds. They're funds that are funded by the general fund. The beauty of fund accounting, we need to appropriate those separate funds as well.
Do you have information on that in your packet? Any questions on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, for the DSS appropriations.
I make a motion to approve the annual fiscal year 2026 Child Services Act appropriation fiscal year 2026 Department of Social Services appropriation.
Can you break that into two separate motions, please?
I make a motion to approve the annual fiscal year 2026 Child Services Act appropriation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
And we have a motion and a second, any discussion on the child services? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Now, is there a, uh, motion for the DSS appropriation?
I make a motion to approve fiscal year 2026 Department of Social Services appropriation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, discussion on that. Seeing none, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Um, Ms. Sims, you said to add some, uh, part about approving.
Yeah, the appropriation.
Appropriation of money.
To state bonus, that's what, um, Ms. Jones passed out prior to the meeting, um, so it's in line with.
Right.
Like I said, the, the state's fiscal year budget. I know Mr. Overby had requested some additional information.
So, we need a motion for that. Uh, you have the information that was presented earlier, um, you also received an email earlier in regards to that.
I assume that would be, uh, making a, a, a motion to approve the appropriation amendment of the state bill?
Yeah, that would, maybe. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
What was the amount? Was that the 5,868?
We're gonna appropriate 91,520 and 80 cents in expenditures for the bonuses and the payroll taxes. 85,000 will be reimbursed from the state, and the county will pick up the balance.
So, the county is only having to do the 5868?
Yes.
And that is required by the state as well. So, we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Then I'll second.
Can we have a second? Okay.
What's the timeline that the, that it has to be paid?
I think some localities pay it last month, correct?
And, and some that have to be paid by the end of July?
It seemed like I saw somewhere where it's supposed to be paid by October or something.
Again, it's, it's different for every department, and I don't have the information on the timing, just on the dollar amount.
Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you all.
She sent us three minutes ago.
Um, when Mr. Overby asked earlier about it, it came out at 6:70? Um, with that, we're ready to move on to old business, and the transient occupancy tax ordinance levy the amount to schedule a public hearing for August the 11th, 2025. So, I'll entertain a motion to schedule that public hearing for August the 11th on the TOT.
I'll make the motion to schedule the public hearing for our August 11th.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Under old business number 12, ARPA requests.
So, um, there were two funding requests from West Piedmont Planning District Commission that came up, you know, after the budget was pretty much, uh, wrapped up. One for project management of one of our broadband grants, and one for their annual contribution. Um, as y'all know, the Business Development Center project did not go through, sorry to try to get the right, okay, um, the Business Development Center project did not go through, so money that was previously allocated for that, um, so what we're asking is just for y'all to reallocate funds that was originally for that, to pay for, um, the project management fees, for West Piedmont, for the ARC grant for broadband, um, and then their annual contribution of 11,079 dollars, so, um, reallocating 46,079 dollars, the money that was previously for the Business Development Center.
So, would anyone like to make that motion? All we're doing is reallocating funds, nothing new.
What the, um, Mr. Campbell, the interim director is here, he, he came out, so, just wanted to point him out, if y'all haven't, I'm sure some of y'all have met him, but for once you haven't.
Anyone want to make a motion to reallocate those funds?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion now? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, um, everybody's, wants to, we'll continue on. Okay? Okay. Up next, we have the administrators' report.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay. If not, we'll move on to the supervisors' report. Mr. Marshall?
I attended a few meetings, but I'm not gonna go into detail, it's gonna slow down.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kendrick?
I went to EDA meeting, and West Piedmont meeting, I think that was it.
Uh, Mr. Perry?
So, I attended, of course, uh, our ICD Heart Park meeting, uh, they're making headways with ADA compliance, uh, spent half a day shuttling mulch in the playground there, and have a few blisters, new blisters to attest to that. Um, they're move, also moving forward with the, the phone signal booster, um, and other plans to increase and improve the bike route there. Uh, had meetings with step, and we all met with Senator Stanley, and greatly appreciate him taking the time to talk with us and put some insight, uh, and also met with the 911 Committee, who has a lot of concerns with fire and rescue, uh, radio signals and, um, poor radio signals, and something's gonna have to be done about towers. Uh, and then also, I would like to invite everyone to National Night Out, uh, that's gonna be Tuesday, August the 5th, from 5 to 7 at D-Hart Park here in Stewart. Uh, National Night Out is a night, uh, nationally celebrate our law enforcement, along with our community, uh, and it's an opportunity for the sheriff's office to say thank you to the communities that we serve, and appreciate the partners that help us build a safe and healthy community. Uh, so, partners will set up about 5 o'clock, there'll be booze, there'll be fun, games, things for the kids, uh, the sheriff's office will provide some hot dogs around 6 o'clock, and fellowship for the rest of the evening, and wrap things up around 7 or until. So, everyone's invited, and look forward to seeing everyone there. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Overby?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, um, what I have, um, I apologize for not making the Parks and Rec, um, I'll be honest, uh, it was my, uh, one-year-old's birthday, so we were, we're celebrating that. Um, the other thing is, uh, there is no retainer for our county attorney, it's, uh, our county attorney is paid by the hour, so if we're not using them, we're not paying for them, if we are using them, we're paying for them. I just wanna get that out there for everybody. With that, we are ready to enter into closed meeting. I'll make the motion. Who has their verbiage?
Pursuant to 2.2-3711, the Code of Virginia, move and convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-3711A1, Public Service Authority for Blue Ridge District, Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program at Large, Planning Commission, uh, and Real Estate Matters under 2.2-3711A3, as well as Personnel Matters, 2.2-3711A1, Discussion of County Administrator Performance.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, okay, can y'all keep it down just a little longer? Uh, we have a motion, a second, discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall? Ease out. Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.